Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, August 8, 2022. Call this meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present with the exception of Consulor Purdy, who has been excused. I'd like to invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which is safe, one nation under God, equal to liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. There are no items under general this evening. That brings us to item five, Committee Correspondence to Council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Consulor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. The Benefit Saco Old Church Beach Transit Committee met last week. We are still in need of drivers, bus drivers. Some of the routes have been restricted or cut back because of that. So if anybody from the general public is interested in driving a bus, or knows somebody who might be interested, please refer them to Benefit Saco Old Church Beach Transit. Thank you, Mayor Doyle.
Thank you very much. Any further committee correspondents at this time? Moving on to item six, Public Comment. There's one person that has signed up. That is David Plaven. Remind it all, folks, please stick to the three-minute time limit and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm David Plaven. I live at Two Surf Street, and I'm also the Vice President of SOS Saco Bay. I'm here to request immediate action in our quest to construct a barrier to combat the erosive power of the ocean created by the Saco River jetty. In a follow-up to the congressional passage of the Water Resources Development Act of 2022, which provides $45 million for the Camp Ellis coastline, both Senator King and Collins's representatives suggested that Saco draft, sign, and send a letter of support now. This is a terrific idea. In that letter, we can agree without committing funds to the proposed $660,000 cost share and request a project partnership agreement in 30 days. We want a real timetable so we're not constantly in a state of flux while the Corps plots its next poison pill. Past every two years, WADA is designed to ensure that the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers carries out projects in an economically and environmentally responsible manner. This puts pressure on the Corps to act expeditiously after years of showing no appetite for helping us. Furthermore, we should reach out to Senator King to put further pressure on the Corps to follow up on its 2017 promise by the Assistant Secretary of the Corps to take action to solve our problem. This would open the door for the City of Saco to fully commit for getting this done. For too long, this has been about why we cannot enter into an agreement with the Corps, caused mostly by the demands and threats made by the Corps. That dynamic needs to change. Thanks to the initiative of the mayor, the work of our city administrator, and the unanimous support of our council, we're not there yet, but we're getting closer. The next step needs to be ours. There were two other projects, there were two projects Senator Collins included in the WADA bill. One was for us. The other was to dredge Kittery Harbor. How long do you think it will take to get that harbor dredged? Early this year, Scarborough's emergency dredge, funded by the feds, was handled in a matter of months and done outside the dredge season. We too are facing an emergency along our coastline. Waiting can no longer be considered an option. So I asked that you please act decisively, and please act now. Thank you.
Thank you. There is nobody else that has signed up. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard.
Kevin Roach, 18 Vines Road, President of SOS Saco Bay. Well, first off, on a fun note, it is the days between, and the cool people know what that means, and only cool people go to Thompson's Point to see Phil Lesh play. And just like life and the SOS pursuits here, what a long, strange trip it's been. So that said, reiterate what David just said, and add to it. A new letter of support would be greatly appreciated because that will push the Army Corps. The cost share that's proposed there ties into the dredge that we're pursuing. I strongly believe, our group strongly believes, that that dredge counts, will count, when you sit down with a PPA to save you money, the city money, and be the cost share. That's a strong belief on that. But I don't think signing a letter of support certainly financially obligates you to that cost share yet. It's just getting that out. That's what the Army Corps sees on my vacation where, but on my vacation, I actually did go down to Barnstable County and met with the dredge people down there. And, you know, they fight the fight. They have a lot of holdups. And one of the holdups is the Army Corps, the Army Corps getting back to them. So the message they have for each municipality in a county where I'm dredged is get on the Army Corps. Don't sit, don't wait, don't think they care that Senator Collins passed $45 million extra for this project. They're just waiting. They're waiting, they're just like any other organization of pressure points. And getting that letter of support would be critical for that, and also in our dredge pursuits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If there's anyone else who would like to address the council, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, moving on to item seven, Approval of the Minutes for July 25, 2022. Is there approval for the minutes?
So moved.
Consulor Hatch, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulor McPhail. Any discussion? Roll call, vote on the minutes. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulor Gunn?
Yes.
Consulor Berman?
Yes.
Consulor Hatch?
Yes.
Consulor McPhail?
Yes.
Consulor Johnston?
Obstinate as I was not here.
Five zero one. That brings us to the consent items. Item eight, and there are three items on the consent agenda. Item A is a solid waste permit for Triana Waste Services, Inc., on page two in your packet. Item B is waiving fees for the Young School Building, page eight in your packet. And item C is confirm mayor's appointment of Andrew Bracy to the Historic Preservation Commission as a regular member on page nine in your packet. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Consulor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Consulor Berman, any discussion? Consul, so you're aware, and so the public's aware, the item is for the Young School Building that was built out of ESER funds and approved by the school board in their earlier, earlier in the year, and maybe even late last year during their budget cycle. Again, approved by ESER funds from the federal government. Any questions? Any discussion on the consent items? No discussion, roll call, vote. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulor Gunn?
Yes.
Consulor Berman?
Yes.
Consulor Hatch?
Yes.
Consulor McPhail?
Yes.
Consulor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Brings us to item nine, and action items up first is item A, a public hearing final reading, Charter Amendment Number One, Office of the Mayor, page 10 in your packet, assigned to Consulor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council endeavors to make a few amendments to the Charter. As described in MRSA Title 30A, Chapter 111, Section 2104, the process for making amendments to the Charter requires a public hearing before a vote by council. Additionally, if approved by the council, the item would be voted in referendum by the public in November. This amendment provides the mayor with a ceremonial office in City Hall to be used for official city business. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Consulor Gunn to open the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulor Berman to open the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call, vote to open the public hearing. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulor Gunn?
Yes.
Consulor Berman?
Yes.
Consulor Hatch?
Yes.
Consulor McPhail?
Yes.
Consulor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to open the public hearing. At 6:39, the public hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please come forward and be heard. Seeing nobody seeking recognition, Consulor Gunn.
I move to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing by Consulor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulor Berman. Any discussion? Closing the public hearing. Roll call, vote to close. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulor Gunn?
Yes.
Consulor Berman?
Yes.
Consulor Hatch?
Yes.
Consulor McPhail?
Yes.
Consulor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to close the public hearing at 6:40 PM. Consulor Gunn.
The City Council hereby ordains and approves the final reading of Saco City Charter Amendment Number One, Office of the Mayor, dated July 25, 2022, and order that the amendment be placed on the November 8, 2022 ballot. This amendment, if approved by the voters, would have an effective date of January 1, 2023.
Motion's been made by Consulor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulor Berman. Any discussion? Consul Archer?
Again, I just want to continue my support for this. And again, my only two concerns on this was where we write the city can, it's not a shall. So it can be determined by the city administrator to not even give a location. It doesn't force it to happen. And again, I'd rather have that location to be in perpetuity, a single location that just lasts. Again, I'm okay with it as written, but those are my concerns that I had from last, two weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Consulor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I originally did my rough copy that I sent to the council and City Administrator Kane Raff, I did include the word shall, but with sort of the option. I think they, by the intent of the language that they put in here, I'm content with it, though, because essentially, it has almost the same effect, though, in the sense that any future mayor can go to the city administrator on day one, say, I'd like an office, or no, I wouldn't like an office. And therefore, you know, the process then plays itself out from there, though. So I think the inclusion of the word shall, especially given the problems that we had about a decade ago, gave staff enough pause, though, they decided to change it to can. But since the effect is still the same, in the sense that it's really, you know, it's the mayor's choice whether to have the office, though, but I think it's still respecting the city administrator's authority and their ability to sort of craft the staff needs physically in the City Hall as they need it, that the decision of if there is an office, where it should be, falls the city administrator. I think, considering that we're sort of restoring something that's been gone for a long time, and a lot of people had some strong opinions about, it's a way to sort of respect everybody's point of view and not step on anybody's toes while we're trying to sort of, you know, put something back in place that any of the mayors that surround us, who by the letter of their charters have actually less authority on their day-to-day basis than even our mayor has, enjoy these palatial offices. I'm just looking to give, you know, a chair and a desk for the mayor to be able to sit at and speak to constituents. So I think as a compromise to sort of get us back into something that we should have, I think, as just a normal course of action, I think this leaves everybody satisfied. And I'm content with it.
Thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion? Consulor Hatch, then Consulor Johnston, Consulor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm not going to repeat the objections that I brought at the last council meeting, but I do have concerns about the potential impact that that presence could have on staff. So I will be not supporting this this evening.
Thank you, Consulor Johnston.
Thank you. Yeah. And again, along those same lines, I've spoken this several weeks ago now. I think this is unnecessary. We haven't had a mayor's office since the 1970s, when this community chose to switch to a manager council form of government. It's never been needed. It's still, in my viewpoint, from my viewpoint, is not needed. We have space that can be made available for any one of us elected officials. In fact, when the renovation occurred here in the mid-'90s, the conference room was created for such use. So I share the concerns that Consulor Hatch has brought up as far as creating office space and what the perception is to the public, as far as the mayor's actual role in this community per the Charter, along with what the mayor's role is within amongst staff, if we have a mayor in the future that chooses to make use of that office every day of the week. I understand there are other communities that have an office of the mayor, but those communities never did away with the office of the mayor. So we have a building that, for as long as I've been seated at this council, I've been told it doesn't have adequate space. Here we are, I guess, going to have an ebb and flow situation. I understand there's been changes made by Consulor Gunn, but I'm actually more concerned with the changes because from my perspective, it seems as though you can have one mayor that comes in and say, I want an office. We create an office space. Three years later, a new mayor says, I don't want that office space. The administrator goes about utilizing that office space, I would hope, because I'm sure that there's use for it. And then the next mayor comes along and says, I want an office. So we do this over and over, you know, situation where we're always looking for an office space for a position that is not even part-time. It's, I mean, that's the role per the Charter. It boggles my mind why we would need an office for a position that per the Charter says you have no administrative role. What's the use of the office, then? To simply meet people? Okay, we have a conference room. We have a city administrator's office. I'm sure there's other offices that could be utilized if a mayor needs to meet with a constituent, or a mayor could do what mayors have always done, just generally go to those constituents or hold mayor's hours. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Consulor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll-
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I do have a question. Sorry. Just when we last spoke about this, it was my understanding that this was going to take effect the next term of mayor. Is that stated? And the way this motion is written, it takes effect this coming January? I don't know if that was-
I think that was a, I think that if you read back in your emails, that was the opinion of city solicitor Tim Murphy. However, you have the ability to change that as the council if you saw fit. But Tim's opinion in his email to you suggested that this be the language, and that's why it was changed to that.
Again, I was away, obviously. I must have missed that email. But was there a reason given as to why? I mean-
I'd have to go back and look through the emails to-
I would make that amendment, then, that this take effect in January 2024.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Are you making an official amendment?
Yes, sir.
There's been an amendment made. So there's a, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulor Hatch. To amend this to take place January 1, 2024. Any discussion on the amendment, on the amendment only? Consulor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consul Johnson sort of beat me to the punch a little bit on there if I was actually going to get to that. So I consider this a friendly amendment, considering that was my original intent. And since solicitor Murphy didn't really, from my memory of looking at his opinion, didn't really get too deep in the specifics, it really sort of covers my intent, though, because, again, not wanting to, you know, step on anybody's feet here, I don't want the optics of thinking that I'm trying to secure an office for a particular mayor when I'm trying to secure an office option for the office of the mayor itself. And therefore, by moving it to the next term, I, you can't say that I'm trying to give it to one person. I'm just trying to give it to the office. So I consider this a friendly amendment, and I'd be more than happy to support it because that was my original intent.
Thank you, Consulor Gunn. Any further discussion? On the amendment only, on the amendment only. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulor Gunn?
Yes.
Consulor Berman?
Yes.
Consulor Hatch?
Yes.
Consulor McPhail?
Yes.
Consulor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion pass, the amendment passes six zero. Back to the main motion now amended. Any further discussion on the main motion now amended? Seeing no further discussion, roll call, vote. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Consulor Gunn?
Yes.
Consulor Berman?
Yes.
Consulor Hatch?
No.
Consulor McPhail?
Yes.
Consulor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes four two. That brings us to item B, one reading, Extension of the Emergency Moratorium of the Installation of Pole-Mounted Solar Arrays in Residential Zoning Districts, page 12 in your packet, and assigned to Consulor Berman. Consulor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By petition from Saco residents, City Council established an emergency moratorium on the installation of pole-mounted solar arrays located in residential zoning districts during the June 6, 2022 meeting. State and city policies encourage development of renewable energy resources, but Saco's existing ordinances do not provide rules to protect neighboring properties or public areas from potential impacts from the installation of renewable energy facilities and private property. The Planning Board devised a draft amendment to Saco's zoning ordinance for this purpose. It will be reviewed by City Council as a new business item during the upcoming August 22 meeting. Meanwhile, the moratorium expired on August 5, and should be renewed to provide time for completion of the zoning amendment process, which can be completed by the end of September. Be it ordered that City Council extend the moratorium on the installation of pole-mounted solar arrays located in residential zoning districts through October 7, 2022.
Motion's been made by Consulor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Consulor Hatch. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, roll call, vote. Consul Archer?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. Brings us to item C, one reading, accepting, excuse me, acceptance of finance director write-off report, page 13 in your packet, and assigned to Counsel Archer. Counsel Archer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The billing and collections policy requires an annual report from the Finance Department of write-offs of accounts deemed uncollectible. In fiscal year 2022, the finance director wrote off $10,425.25 in ambulance bills of patients who were insured, insurance was not properly billed, or the patient had since deceased. Be it ordered that the council accept the finance director's annual write-off report, I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Counsel Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on accepting the finance director write-off report? Counselor Hatch?
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I just wanted to acknowledge to Finance Director Salis that this number is significantly lower than the last one we talked about.
By half a million.
Yeah, yeah, significant. And I just wanted you to know that I noticed, and I appreciate the fact that we've switched billing companies, so perhaps that's contributed. But I do appreciate you keeping your thumb on this for the benefit of the city. So thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing no further discussion, roll call vote. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero. That brings us to item 10, new business. There's no new business this evening. Brings us to item 11, administrative updates. City Administrator Kenrath?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you may know, nomination petitions are now available at the city clerk's office. Thirty-five signatures are required. Petitions are due back on September 9th for placement on the November ballot. It's awards four and five on the council that are up this year. Preview of our upcoming agenda for August 22. We'll have 32 Lincoln Road, zoning map amendment, PSOB. We'll give a presentation and update. Ocean Greens Drive, street acceptance. Taylor Berry Lane, street acceptance. And we'll again be talking about the small-scale solar energy facilities or solar arrays and some ordinance language to consider there. We'll also, at some point in the near future, be talking about short-term rental regulations and a draft of the regional dredge memorandum of agreement, which I'll get to in a moment. We have a traffic planning study we're currently engaged in. The city of Saco has entered into a three-party agreement with the main department of transportation and the town of Old Orchard Beach to participate in a planning and feasibility study that will look at improving the I-195 and Ocean Park Road transition into Old Orchard, as well as the connectivity into Saco. Saco will only be required to contribute 10% of the total cost of the study, and sees this as a valuable partnership to work towards improving our own Ocean Park Road traffic safety issues. The first public meeting for the study will be held at OOB Town Hall on Wednesday, August 17, at 6:00 p.m. We'll be advertising this on Saco's social media pages to get the word out. The study will take approximately one year to complete, and we appreciate the Old Orchard Beach and main DOT, including Saco, and this plenty exercise. I look forward to participating over the coming year. Our public work staff will be leading this effort on the Saco side, so feel free to reach out with any questions you may have. It's myself or the Public Works Director, Pat Fox. Lastly, we had a meeting last week regarding the Regional Dredge Commission to discuss the potential regional program and pending final actions by the York County Commissioners. Representatives from Bedford, Scarborough, and Old Orchard Beach were in attendance, as well as members of SOS Saco Bay. After some discussion on many of the facets of the potential governing structure and framework and what that might look like, those decided our next steps really should be formulating and drafting an MOA for consideration and approval by our respective governing bodies. So that's in the works right now. We're going to work with our city solicitor, with SOS Saco Bay and others to come up with an MOA. It'll be circulated among the group for comment. Then we will bring it back before our councils for consideration and approval. And this is all, obviously, pending the final actions of York County also. Thank-
Thank you. Any questions for City Administrator Kenrath? Seeing no questions, moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Before we go into that, I just want to thank all city staff that participated and all the volunteers who participated in National Night Out. Huge success and great fun, and many folks were there. So just thank you for everyone coming out and making that a success. So any further council discussion and comment? Seeing none, moving on. There's no executive session this evening. That brings us to item 14. Adjournment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Counselor Berman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote to adjourn. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero to adjourn at 6:56. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.